Select Board Meeting, November 13th, 2017. In attendance, Chairman Doug Moguland, Joe Dede, Ross Fox, Carl Steinhardt, Cindy Pendleton.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board Meeting for Monday, November the lucky First order of business is public comments. If anyone has any public comments, now's your opportunity. If you could raise your hand, we'll recognize you, and if you could state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Sir?
Public comments pertaining to anything?
Sure.
The agenda at hand, or does that, will that be after your review of some of the items that you have in your agenda?
Generally, it's on anything you'd like to speak to. It's generally, we'll just take public comments. We will, generally, it's open session, I hate to say open season. Open session directed at the Board of Selectmen on any topic. Usually, it's not a back-and-forth type of thing. At the, if you're here regarding the 6:55 appointment, we'll have a little bit of flexibility there to take some commentary at that time as well, once you've heard from various back-and-forth.
I'm just saying, is this the only opportunity to speak on anything? Or, like, I notice, I'm here about the 61B discussion.
Correct. That's the 6:55 appointment. So, generally with that, I think tonight, we'll be a little lenient with that, and generally, we only have public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Given this topic at hand, we'll take some commentary after that presentation, or after that discussion, and we'll come back to you for that. Is that all right?
Wait for that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. So, seeing how it is 6:55, so now it is Mr. Najem and the Conservation Commission Planning Board and Assessors regarding the 61B discussion for 739 College Highway, Southwick Country Club, right of first refusal. So, is there anyone from, we'll take it in order, from Conservation, then Planning, and then the Assessors that would like to speak to this?
Conservation.
Mr. Pratt?
We don't see any purpose in saving this land as conservation land, as far as use it goes. It doesn't really serve a purpose.
It wasn't on our list.
Yeah. We do realize that sometimes, things come up that would not be expected to be on a list, recognizing that as well. We still don't see a real purpose for that property.
Very well. Planning?
Marcus Phelps, Vice Chairman of the Planning Board. Was not one of our four high priority areas that we thought should be protected or utilized in the future for something related to town. There's two zones there, an R-20 and an R-40, residential. There's plenty of infrastructure available, around College Highway, water service, I believe, natural gas service. So, it is an area that, as far as I'm concerned, having been the planner here for five years, it's reasonable to have that developed, pronounced.
Thank you. Assessors?
To your permission.
Any other board or commission in town that wants to speak to this?
Community Preservation Committee, John St. Chris is a representative.
You're just gonna switch your hat? I got it.
Yeah, different hat for now, and also not seeing a purpose in preserving that property.
Thank you. Any other boards and commissions? Select Board have anything that they want to add to this discussion?
I'll wait for the presentation.
Okay. Applicant, Mr. Najem?
My name is Bill Najem. I'm the owner of Southwick Country Club, have been for 33 years, based upon, and now a full owner of the golf course. And I don't have a presentation to make. I'm here and available to answer any questions that you have regarding the offer that's been made by Dick Fiore and his partners. I can tell you that we try to operate the course well, and provide a public service to, or public play, I should say, for as long as we possibly could sustain it. It's not really a good time to be in the golf course business anyway, anywhere in the country, but there's an awful lot of public play golf available in this market, and so it's become increasingly difficult to make any money in the business. And I think both Dick and his partners are really good, high-quality people, they're well-known in the town, they've got a good reputation, and I think if anybody is going to develop the property for housing, or develop, ultimately develop a restaurant, if there's a second closing, I would think that we have really good, quality people that are going to be involved in this development, and they're going to give you a quality project. Be happy to answer any questions about the offer, or, you know, talk with you about the possibility of the town entertaining it. It's right of first refusal.
Excellent. Okay, I guess now I'll open up the floor. Anyone wants to make a comment, or has a question that we can try to get answered for you. Sir?
The question I have for you three gentlemen-
I just need your name and address for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Manas, I live at Workshad, 170 Workshad, no parents on. My question to you guys is, this right of refusal to buy the property from the current landlord, is that just your purview alone, or is this something that has to go before a town meeting? Because I'm aware that, from articles there in the newspaper, Mr. Najem was granted an agreement for the last 10 years on that property, in the interest of preserving open space. So, I was wondering if the town decided to forego some revenue that could have been used for town services or whatever. You know, why do they not want to even, you know, attempt to do some sort of feasibility study as to whether or not it could be made to be profitable? I did some homework on this, and I saw that the city of Springfield operates two municipal courses, as does the city of Agawam, and I know that's a good recreational opportunity for their citizens, and those two cities have decided to do that. And one other question I have, other than, you know, whether or not it's just your decision alone, or whether or not it'll be up for the town voters to decide, is the money that I read in another article, that Mr. Dede said we're short of in attempting to acquire another parcel of open land, namely $2 million on the North Plate, adjacent wildlife area. If we're short on that, how does a town expect to be able to purchase that? And if those funds aren't going to be used, that we designated in that special town meeting during the summer, if they're not going to be used toward that end, wouldn't it be worth at least investigating whether or not we could purchase the open space conference? Because I think golf course is a tremendous resource for the town, and it fills not only preservation, it fills the preservation of open space, but a recreational opportunity for citizens as well. And let me answer a few of those questions.
That's quite a list. The answer to your first question, I'm gonna ask Carl to weigh in on, as far as, the reason that we have the right of first refusal is because the property is chapter land for commercial recreation. So, I don't, and Carl, please help me out.
Well, the Assessors, the Assessors here tonight, and she can speak to the issue on the rollback. There is this issue where it's taxed at a lower rate in return for remaining as an open space acquisition asset under a certain category, so they apply on an annual basis, and they get a break on their taxes, but in return for that, they don't develop it. So, now that this is being contemplated to come out, then the Assessors have to look at the history of that, when it was put in, and what the rollback period would be, so that they would be able to recapture the funds that would have normally been-
So, the town has the ability to recapture it?
Right, and she was at three to five years on this one.
Yes, they're all five.
Five years.
It's a first use.
Right, so-
But that initiates-
Right, so that benefit the person did have will be recaptured.
Do you have any idea what the amount of that lost revenue was, in the years that it was allowed? Just per year, guess.
Those are all the five years, and kind of rollback, they say a plus or minus, they're gonna, potentially around $24, $25,000. So, you're gonna make a difference in what you were at?
I see. Point more than that.
So, that's the first question.
Yep.
So, and my guess would have been in the double-digit thousands as a number for the rollback amount, of back taxes that are, the makeup taxes gonna come due when a property comes out.
I see.
The second question is, I believe it is this Board's decision whether or not to exercise our right under the application that's in front of us. It does not need to go to a town, does not go to a town meeting, it's this Board that makes that decision. The next question is regarding the North Pond property. I can't really speak to where they are with their absolute fundraising to get to their target goal to acquire that property, but what I can speak to is, if that project, or any other project, because it has happened, a project doesn't come to fruition, the Community Preservation Committee, by and of its own vote, can terminate a project, and that money that's allocated but not spent gets returned to the CPC, and then other projects can come in and compete for that money. Okay?
Is there, is there a timeframe on, you know, when people are gonna say it's possible or not possible? To church and worship, so.
I would defer to the CPC on that particular question. I know on, there was one that, three or four years later.
It ends up on a CPC, Community Act Preservation Funds, to be just languishing in our land.
Well, it's $1 million CPC money.
Sure.
There's $2 million remaining. There were at one point, $2 million remaining that would be raised, and there is ongoing fundraising at those times, so we're naturally sure where we are with the fundraising. I know that there is a possibility of getting that amount of money that is needed for that. And I think the ten of closing date, Dennis, was-
June 30th.
June 30th of this year, fiscal year. So, until that time, you have to raise the money, so those funds would not become available.
Who's deadline is June 30th?
That'd be the closing date.
For a person?
Correct.
In other words, Denise with Claire Robbins would sell it to somebody else after June 30th?
If they don't extend it again.
Right.
You know, and that money can sit on that shelf, I mean, the day after, they don't have to release that money back into that account, correct?
He's had it sit there, sit there for a while.
Yeah. What was the, we had that one A&R, oh, sorry, there was one development right acquisition that sat for three or four years on Coase Hill, right, that we eventually just Wolf, wasn't it? Wolf, that was the one. That's the one I remember.
You voted for both of those, that South Lumineson.
Yeah, and there was a couple that, yeah, there was some monies left over, but I remember the Wolf was project that was voted and sent forth at town meeting, but then we ended up, it got all complicated, yeah.
Well, can I ask you personally, as a Selectman, seeing how that is the case, would either of you three, you know, even consider, you know, addressing the potential for using that money to purchase what I think is a gem of a property, and would be a very welcome open space and recreational facility? I mean, it seems to me that, you know, just leaving that money tied up in the interest of a parcel that we came forward and don't know what will transpire, I mean, that seems to be a lot of time to be foregoing money for potential good use.
I can't speak for these gentlemen, they'll have, sure.
We have two other golf courses in town, I'm not sure why you're wanting to save that.
But that's not what I'm asking them. I'm asking them-
Let me shoot for it. No, I'll commit suicide first, right.
I'd like to see your purpose behind wanting to save the parcel. Why do you think it's down?
So, I get, so, the question was asked to me, and so, let me, I'll be the first in line to go in front of the firing squad, is, one, I personally don't want, I personally don't want to see the town of Southwick being the operator and owner of a municipal golf course. To your point, there are other public play options in our town today, and I just don't see it. And I've read stories about the Ledges, the Springfield, the Agawam, and it's a joke I've used recently with others, but apparently, the best way to make a small fortune in public play golf is to start with a large one. It's just not, it's not a way, it's gonna be a money loser for the town. Granted, that, the town's not, let me finish one second. Okay, sorry. So, I just don't see the town getting into the municipal golf course business and being an operator of golf course. There are other privately-held golf courses in our town that offer public play. There's other courses very nearby that offer public play, so there's no shortage of opportunities to golf in this area. So, that's my opinion on that matter. And if the other gentlemen have an opinion, they're more than welcome.
Okay, so, my opinion, which was quoted in the paper, unfortunately, didn't say my opinion, it said, "The Select Board or the Selectmen said this," but that was strictly my mouth that said that. So, A, when you start looking at golf courses, you can look at Agawam and Springfield, on paper, they all look beautiful. Call the Agawam mayor and ask him, "Hey, how's that course really doing?" It's not. None of those courses are generating enough of an income where they can lie there. And the last thing I'm gonna bring to this town is more debt, because, oops, the golf course didn't make money this year. Not interested. If this was in front of me a year ago, and there's nothing against North Pond, yeah, I probably would look at it, because I think it is a nice little piece, but it's not here a year earlier. If it was here a year later, after we settled North Pond, I would probably look at it, but it's not. It's here today, and unfortunately, these gentlemen aren't gonna wait nine months for us to think about, maybe we could do something. So, it's unfortunate, it doesn't fit in my timeframe. I do think it's a nice piece of property. I think the other golf courses in town aren't doing well either, so with this one closing, I think it does help sustain the ones we do have that do have public play, but once again, that's my opinion. So, that's where I'm at.
Chris, we're required by law to do an open space plan for the town of Southwick, required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In that plan, this parcel has never been listed. We even went further this past year and asked the Conservation Planning Board, just a CPC, and several other boards, to list prioritized parcels in the town of Southwick. They would like to see preserved, because you should be following a plan. It's the CPC money, or town money, just shouldn't be going wherever something opens up. You should be following a plan, and that's what the Commonwealth wants you to do, and that's what CPC should also do, follow the plan. So, this parcel was never listed. Is it a nice parcel? Would we all like to probably see it stay open, and drive by and see the trees and people playing golf? Sure, we would. But I think Doug is absolutely correct. Municipal golf courses are a bad idea, especially for a small community like Southwick. We have several other private individuals operating golf courses in the town of Southwick, so a need is already being made. But what's being put forth is an opportunity for our community to grow in a, hopefully a desirable way, of nice houses, and maybe a mixture of business perhaps, I don't know. When they meet with the Planning Board, there might be some discussions. So, it's, we're trying to, the town has to grow, we do need additional revenue. We're in a position right now where our schools can absorb additional students because of declining enrollment. So, I, again, I'd like to say that we could preserve all the space and never change Southwick, but that's not a reality.
Well, I can understand, you know, your concern, you know, for development, but it was my understanding, if somebody can correct me if I'm not mistaken, that as recently as 10 years ago, maybe it was a little longer, there were several zoning bylaws passed that was supposed to restrict development and limit the number of new housing units that could be constructed. And I find it interesting you say that, you know, the schools can absorb, or, because of declining enrollment, when we had just built an expansive addition to our school just two years ago, to accommodate, I would assume, an urgent population, plus the regionalization that's supposed to. So, I find that, I find that a curious statement. When it comes to golf courses, you say there's several other opportunities. There's two that I know of. One is Edwood, which is also a great, nice course to play, and, you know, I've sometimes heard of them complaining about the level of play there, and it's reasonably affordable. The other one, of course, is the range. And I don't know how many people in this room are golfing. You're talking $82 for 18 holes green fees. So, if you're a citizen of Southwick, and you wanna go play around the golf, unless you're, you know, well-off, your options are generally limited to either Edwood or Southwick Country Club. I've been to Edwood on different occasions, Saturdays and Sundays, and you can't get off, because they either have something going, or the golf course is occupied, or there's so many people out there, the weight would be too exorbitant. You know, I mean, for you guys to describe that the level of play is limited, and golf courses aren't potential moneymakers, I can't agree. And I think it's not like there's all supposed to many places you can go play golf in town. I also did some research of my own on viability of municipal golf courses. I don't know if you've heard about the IRS investigation of the Springfield municipal courses, where their pro was pocketing some of the proceeds, the revenue that that course generated from supporting the city. And they went from, like, a five-year average of, like, $1,200,000 in receipts, to after this guy was being investigated by the IRS, to $1,600,000 in a year's time. Now, that's a difference of $400,000 from the five-year average in receipts. So, maybe some of your knowledge of what a municipal golf course can generate could be skewed, at least when it comes to Springfield. I noticed Agawam, too, in their first year of operation, they realized $31,000 in revenue for the town, for the city of Agawam. It's since decreased, and it looks like, it appears also to be losing money. But, you know, I wonder if it's being operated to its maximum potential. So, I think there are opportunities for municipal courses to generate revenue. And when it comes to development again, and you bring up businesses as such, you know, I was referring to the fact that we had passed zoning bylaws in the past that would quite restrict the amount of policy development in town. The amount, you say that, you know, potentially some businesses. You know, I mean, what guarantees can Mr. Fiore offer us today, that, you know, I mean, he plans to build houses, and that's very admirable, and I would wish him all the success and growth, that's eventually what he ends up doing. And, you know, that can bring value, and of course, revenue to the town, but who's to say that, you know, after he consummates the sale, that, you know, some potential big box retailer makes him an offer to put a Walmart there, or something, or some other kind of thing?
Okay, we need to, we need to move on. I will address one, one point. One is, the zoning on that parcel is residential today, so if anyone was gonna change any of the zoning over there, that would have, that would have to go to a town meeting, requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting. The other point was on, there used to be in town a phased-growth bylaw, and it did limit the number of dwelling permits that could be issued in a given year. It was on the books for probably 15 or 20 years, and it was renewed at least twice. They never, in the town, ever triggered it, even with all the residential subdivision construction that went on in this town in the middle to late 90s into the early 2000s, never triggered the phased-growth bylaw, and that bylaw has actually expired. So, it was allowed to expire by town meeting because we never hit it.
It was never triggered owing to the fact that it never exceeded its mandate?
Meaning, exactly. There was a law on the book, you could only issue so many special permits, and we never, per year, and there, and it was a rolling number calendar, and there was never a building permit denied, because it would have exceeded the threshold of the phased-growth bylaw. So, anyway, we'll move on. Is there anyone else that would like to be, speak on this matter, or be heard on this matter? Pleasure, the Board.
Did you want to discuss this forever?
We can't, I'm asking what we want to do here.
I think we got a little bit of the time.
Yep.
We can take more public comments, you know?
Yep.
And the news media is gonna help us by saturating it, and then we can table this to our next meeting.
Very well. Okay, and our next meeting is next Monday, correct? The 20th?
No.
No.
No, no.
27th, right?
Right.
Okay. So, we'll schedule this under Old Business for the 27th.
I have a question. So, Rob Lebeck, I'm a consultant for the, just to clarify, it sounded like there was unanimous opinion. This has been public comment, is there a reason why we, why we wait?
Well, it's not a, it's not an insignificant decision. I think we still want to take the public comment, if it's available, before we, I agree, I think that's the direction that we're generally leaning, but I'd like the opportunity for the other residents, if anyone has any commentary, or would like to address this Board, to bring it. And, you know, statutorily, I don't think it's gonna kill us to do that. Sure. Mr. McMahon?
Mike McMahon, 30, Warren Lane. Could we just, I know this is not the Planning Board, you don't have an application for anything, but could we just get a three or five-minute overview of what it is, the bylaw can build, I mean, just kind of a quick overview?
I'd be happy, general discussion.
Sure. Sure.
So, as mentioned, the property is owned residential. By the way, I'm Rob Lebeck of Marla Lebeck Consulting. We're working on the planning already, actually. We already started the wetland delineation of the property, the survey work. The, call it the east side of the property, Tanary and College Highway, is a little bit more interesting. We likely will have a subdivision project that will come in, it will be single-family homes, they're all single-family homes, and we're anticipating, on the other side of the road, that has a lot of frontage, the triangle piece where the existing clubhouse is now. We anticipate that the clubhouse will remain either as a restaurant, or will become two lots, and the rest of the property will be developed as single-family homes. There's a flexible residential development bylaw, we were actually talking about not too long ago, earlier today, and how that plays into the development of the east side. Generally speaking, this is about as developable a piece as you get. There's three different roads that we're able to take advantage of the frontage off of. Certainly, we'll do this in a micro-sensitive manner. I've already scheduled a site visit for the Conservation Commission, to take a look at the wetland delineation. That's really the first piece of this. Then we'll take what we have, and realize what all our setbacks are. We'll look at the soils, from there, we'll then confirm what we think we can get for lots. We'll probably work informally with the planner, kick some plans around early, come to the Planning Board with a preliminary. That process typically will take us a month or two. As we work through that process, we'll go into a definitive subdivision, either a flexible or conventional subdivision, and the west side, that'll likely be more of a straightforward way to carve these out. Proven-not-required lots are allowed off of existing frontage, so we anticipate a lot of that side will be proven-not-required lots. Really developable a piece, you know, and we'll do it in a respectful manner, and we'll work with Mr. Schussler and the Conservation Commission for actual actions. Thank you.
I'd just stop for a few comments, because I'm not gonna be able to do it for the next meeting.
Where else?
And I think it's, certainly I respect your interest in wanting this to be continued as a golf course. I can tell you that I've struggled with it for the last, probably the last 10 or 15 years. Until the early 2000s, you could actually make money in the golf course, you could take care of all of your bills and expenses, and-
You could take care of all of your bills and expenses and it could sustain itself and you actually could make a little bit of money. I love being in the business. I can tell you, we're probably charging substantially what we were charging for memberships ten years ago. We're charging for greens fees substantially what we charged for greens fees ten years ago. And it's because there's a great deal of public play golf available right within our area. For golfers, it's a wonderful place if you're a golfer and you're trying to find a place probably within a half-hour drive of Southwick Country Club. There might be as many as twenty public play golf courses. If we add them all up, there may be even more than that. That's available for anybody to play. As a consequence, our expenses keep going up, but our profits are negligible and going down. And it's very, very difficult to operate it as an independent private operator, as a municipal... I mean, there's a part of me that would love to see Southwick continue to be a golf course. Don't get me wrong, I've said that to Dick. But as a municipal, it's been definitely operated at loss. And you are owners, and the town is going to have to take everything. So, because it can't be operated any tighter or any more efficiently than I've operated theirs, is it a problem?
Can I make back to him? Let me get Mr. Phelps. Mr. Phelps.
I'll just expand a little bit on, from a planning standpoint, flexible residential development. We actually will be able to conserve open space. The bylaw requires a minimum forty percent of the buildable land to be in open space. So you could end up with maybe over forty percent because that excludes wetlands and other areas that can be built on. So the area will remain open, they'll have a significant amount of open space. Also, the planning board will hold a public hearing on the subdivision development. So there'll be another opportunity for citizens to have input on the design as it proceeds forward from the preliminary to the final, as Mr. Lebeck mentioned. So there's a lot to happen before ground is broken for houses.
Thank you. Mr. Fiori.
I just want to make, clearly, I've been a business owner in Southwick here since nineteen seventy-eight. I have a manufacturing company over here at Co-Mart. Opened up a restaurant. God knows, I've worked a lot harder at that restaurant than I ever worked for. I will never do that again, which is why I'm not interested in restaurants. I would love to keep it as a golf course. It doesn't make any business sense from my perspective. At this rate, I've only been a business owner since seventy-four, seventy-six. I've looked at the numbers. My wife is so pissed off at me not taking away her playground that she's my worst, she's my worst, my worst enemy regarding this. But when it comes down to it, it just doesn't make any fiscal sense. Now, I don't know where you got the idea of Walmart, but I'm just going to go off on a limb and say, if I'm going to put a Walmart in there, first of all, it's not going to be a residential. I'm sure there's going to be a town meeting about having a Walmart in Southwick. It would have to be, yeah, so there's no Walmart going there. So I don't know where that comment came from. But there has been some thought about seeing if something could be sold commercial for small businesses, but I don't even know if that's possible. This particular point, we're looking at doing exactly what Rob had said. It's residential. R forty says it's going to be a full-acre lot, two-hundred-foot of frontage. R twenty says it's a hundred, it's a hundred fifty, or it's two-hundred-and-fifty-foot of frontage, full acre. R twenty says two-hundred-foot of frontage, almost a full acre again, forty thousand square feet. So these are big lots. And the cost of putting roads in there, I have no idea the number of lots because I haven't seen the delineation. But I am, I've lived here since nineteen seventy-one in Southwick. But I pay taxes because I pay all the taxes to that building and also the restaurant. I do contribute to the community. I lived in Westfield apartment buildings in Southwick. I've never paid taxes for that, but I've thrown myself in. It's a tiny little three-thousand-foot corner of my lot that you're more than welcome to.
She's taking notes, don't worry. We're all set, we got it, you got that over there, so.
The meeting's taped, yeah.
I don't care, I don't care. You can take the way. Not getting through, not going through my property to watch the lots of these little toll booths. This is what I think the town needs. I'm going to be a good citizen, I'm going to do what the town wants me to do in terms of the size of lots. They're going to be beautiful, they're not going to be little... Because that's what they suck. There's a need for good, medium-income, higher, high, low, higher, medium, higher-income housing in this town. We just built out the school system. At best, there would be, I don't know, there can't possibly be sixty lots there. Even if there were, two-point-two kids, I think you can see the bus at two now because we don't want to sustain ourselves. It's a hundred-and-twenty kids. That's if every house there had two kids. I just don't see that being a tremendous incentive. I appreciate it. Thing was, I'd love to keep the golf course. If I could make money having the golf course, owning it, I'd love to do that. It's not, it's not realistic. I think the books speak for themselves, but if the town's interested in running a restaurant and a country club, I can tell you right now, if you follow his principles, you're going to have a lot of people in town that are not going to, I don't even say anything wrong, but, you know, want hard-time employees instead of full-time. If you're going to have to hire a detective to check on the pro every year to make sure he's not skimming his cash business, that's going to be really, really difficult to manage. Try running a restaurant. It's just a difficult thing to manage. So.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Well, I mean...
Mainly to Mr. Najem's commentary because I'm an avid golfer and I was probably one of his best customers and a frequent golfer at the country club. And speaking to many of the people that golf there, I recall, I don't know if it was four years ago or maybe less than that, you had offered two-year memberships each at eighty dollars a year for a membership. That's unheard of. I didn't take advantage of it, but many golfers did.
It was a five-day pass.
All right, all right, something akin to that.
Which is substantially lower than a membership.
So essentially, I would say, and I know a lot of people took advantage of it. So, I mean, I know there's only memberships at these municipal golf courses at a significantly higher denomination than that. So, I mean, I hear a lot of talk that you can't make money on it, that, you know, there's too many other public golf options, et cetera. But, you know, I talked to a lot of people that golf there and still golf there and they love the course.
Don't do it. Don't do it.
Over and over again. Every Saturday and Sunday I go there, I see a full-acre lot. You know, I'm not privy to your books or anything like that, but I do know there are successful municipal golf courses. And if it was staffed and managed effectively, I think it would get an asset for the town of Southwick for years to come. And, you know, I mean, we've had development across the town. You know, College Highways experienced different new businesses there now. You know, I mean, to me, you have to weigh what the town's interests are when it comes to preserving our open space and our rural character, you know, or progressing towards a state of development akin to some of the surrounding towns. And I don't think the townspeople want that type of congestion in town. I think they preserve the more rural character and having recreational opportunities such as that.
Thank you very much.
I just have one more point, if you don't mind. It's not in response.
Sorry.
But it's more of a clarification of what we intend to do and what the agreement calls for. We do intend to come back to the town with regard to the restaurant parcel and for a change in use to business for that parcel. It's been operated as a restaurant since, I believe, nineteen twenty. And it really is not well-suited to housing development. There's an allied piece which I believe has a business designation.
Yep.
And so we will be coming back and making that request if the town decides not to exercise its right to those resources.
Thank you. Last call. Anyone else that would like to be heard on this before we move on to the rest of our agenda?
I would just like to say, even if the select board and people wanted to do this project, I don't feel it'd be feasible. There's just no way it could happen. The money's not available, manpower's not available. We're having a heck of a time trying to get Wally Park up and running. That's a prime example of how things, you need a whole staff to be able to do something like that. So even if there was no North Pond, or if there was nothing going on, this just wouldn't be feasible, it couldn't do it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the rest, we're going to stay here. Might as well. Okay. So we'll move on to the rest of our agenda here. So the, is there an updated one of these?
Tomorrow morning you can put them up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the first is to acknowledge a payroll warrant, number eighteen twelve, dated November thirteenth. It's not a hundred ninety-six thousand? Fantastic. Oh, it went up. Hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and two cents. Thank you. And then the next item is the minutes of November sixth.
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Designate area local municipal official for MPO. Captain?
Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is, that's all in here.
Yes, sir. I read it, I was hoping you'd do some clarification.
Carl, how does that normally work? I mean, the mayors have, is it a vote for each community or? What happens is each, there's groupings of communities. Our community, we're part of a community that has four individuals, one is us. Right. And then a mayor of either Agawam, West Springfield, Shore, Westfield. Brian is tasked with supporting the designation of the mayor's name, Tony stepping down. Right. So that's why the chairman has to let him out. I would overwhelmingly support Mayor Sullivan as the representative because of the great working relationship we have with our sister city of Westfield.
Is that a motion, sir?
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to accept donation from Western Mass Rendering, Inc. I just looked right at it. I didn't even read it. It's right here. This is from Mr. David Plakus. Western Mass Rendering is pleased to give an unrestricted contribution to the town of Southwick in the amount of nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven... Oops, sorry, and twenty-seven dollars. Now.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. And I'd like to, and I do this every year, it seems. The Plakus family has had a tremendous longstanding relationship with the town of Southwick. Relatives that have served on the select board. They are just the finest example of citizens in the town of Southwick.
And they do a great job. Great people.
And we appreciate it, we really do.
And I'm not just saying that because they gave me a scholarship when I graduated from the great Southwick High School in nineteen seventy-five.
What year was that?
Fifty years ago? Fifty years ago?
Stop it. What year?
Nineteen seventy-five.
Oh, they said fifty-five, I'm like, what? Seventy-five, okay. So I was ten years old when I grabbed it.
He said seventy-five and we got to speak up for you. Seventy-five. Eighty-six. All right, let's get back on track. Approved substitute clerk.
Yep.
Okay, so we have two.
Yep, you have two that I'm recommending?
Two, yes, I did. Okay, they are Erica Baker and Rosalyn Terry.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Was there another part to that that I was supposed to?
Oh, well, I was unsure, but these are seasoned people as opposed to the last floater you brought on with experience for custodial. You gave them a grace period before you made an adjustment due to their experience of years. So you certainly have someone, you have two people that are coming on with experience. So you could contemplate the same thing or a longer period of time before their adjustment?
Yeah, I would, my opinion is I would.
Yeah, I'd wait till after the first of the year to give them the higher rate.
That gets us through the holidays and...
Sounds good.
Two months.
Two months, yeah.
Perfect. And that's by, you don't need a vote for that.
Right now. I mean, that's how I would do it.
Seems reasonable. Approved CDBG grant extension request.
Motion that the chairman sign.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reluctantly. I got it. Transfer station hours.
That came in a mail.
Yes. That is to, that's to accommodate the fact that the holidays fall on Mondays and the transfer station would be closed on half-days on those Saturdays leading up to it and the Tuesdays after the Monday holidays.
Yep.
So this is going to allow them to, this is going to allow them to stay, actually open on those Tuesdays, but they'll have to do so on overtime because it is something where you want to make sure the waste stream is delivered to the transfer station and transported out of town.
Correct. Do we need to read that or are we just approve it or it's just?
Randy, has, do you have a letter from Randy?
Yep.
You just need to sign out on it?
You got it. Thanks for working with me here.
I was trying to...
Okay, so we need a motion on this. So they'd be open on Saturday, the twenty-third, normal hours. Closed on Monday for Christmas, open on Tuesday, and then Saturday, the thirtieth, open and back open on Tuesday. So really, the only day you're losing is the Mondays, but those are the actual holidays, correct?
And they're normally closed, so...
Because of the holiday, they would be closed.
Well, no, they're not open anywhere.
Oh, on Monday. So they're going to open on those Mondays?
But generally, so they'll still be closed on the Mondays that they're normally closed, but they would be taking their holidays on Tuesdays and you want them open on Tuesdays.
I get it. Now I get it.
Because of public health.
Correct. Motion for that, please.
I'll make a motion as ready.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Doing this backwards, I should give it this.
Confused, we're in a different room.
I know it. I can't tell my left from my right. Okay.
I feel like a clerk. I don't know what's going on.
Post, holy crap. So we're going to post the foreman, solid waste internal.
Right.
So you need a motion to post?
Well, that's because you're moving the foreman that was down there to be in the, they had the equipment operator in the highway division.
Oh, because I skipped that over.
Right, so that's what's creating the vacancy, Doug, so.
Got it. So we probably should do that first.
Right.
It's in my chair now.
Yes.
That other meeting ran right up until this, so, all right. Okay. Here's the results.
Yes. Go number one.
I, Zachary Gerard, interested in the heavy equipment operator position for the highway department. I recommend appointing Mr. Gerard to this position. If approved, I also request to post Mr. Gerard's position as foreman of solid waste division. So this is from Mr. Randy Brown. So this would be to appoint Zachary Gerard as the heavy equipment operator for the highway division.
Right, which is essentially taking him out of the solid waste division where he is. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll cite this one.
Which then creates the next vacancy that you're voting on. And this is all union contract?
Oh, of course.
I'm learning. I read it. Now, we're going to post, because that position just vacated, we're going to post the foreman in solid waste internally. Correct?
Yep, pursuant to the union contract.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, very important. The holiday gathering discussion.
Who did we stick with, I mean, who did we get to do that last year?
That was me last year.
I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Fox to do it since he's been sneaking away from that for the last few years. It's about time he got into the Christmas cheer.
Don't sell past the closure, you're crazy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One extension.
Extension all you want. And I'm not sure if you call it Christmas or a holiday, but either way, plan it. And I'm not sure if you call it Christmas or a holiday, but either way, plan it.
All right, I will be working with the C O and the administrative assistant, and we will be a dedicated team to, to make it as successful as.
I still did that thing, yeah.
The Jurius might not call you back, though.
Whatever you do, don't go to the Jurius. He shafted us bad last year with that.
And I tell you, you want to hold it.
Joe's motion, my second, over strenuous objection from the clerk.
And I tell you, you want to hold it in here on a Friday evening, right, when the volunteers can make it?
That's, you know, we'll let him set all that up.
Yeah, okay.
We'll give him wide range of discretion on this issue.
Okay.
My committee is at your command, Mr. Chairman.
Holy hell. Okay, any other action items that I missed in this action folder?
That's under old business.
You would put that in old business.
Okay. We did that, we did that.
Yeah, yeah, we want to talk about it.
We did that.
Now, now we're sending them off.
Old business, okay.
So we do want to talk about this under old business.
Okay, we'll come right back to it. Okay. Old business. Status, the chief of police thing closes next Friday?
This Friday.
This Friday, sorry. Yep.
So.
Covered bridge, there was an update from that today.
The fine chief was given an impression by the engineer that, that they had looked at something, but they would be producing something in the near future.
Very near future.
Is that how you read that email?
Okay. Yeah, that's not how I read the email. I was slightly concerned about that email, but we'll see what they come back with.
At least there's some action being done, so.
Right, there is an engineer that's been engaged by the group.
And it sounds like on the pecking order, that's next on the list as the bridge, so it sounds like it'll get quicker than.
Well, I think, you know, if it, the chief knows that he has access to the town attorney to help move it along if he needs it.
Oh, yeah, but I think we're in the right direction.
That's the key.
Review of, sorry, North Pond personal watercraft. I've heard nothing back from the chief yet. That's still pending, so unless anyone wants to debate that again.
Reviewing that draft.
Okay. Review of liquor license fees. That was in our chair now.
Over the springtime, we had looked at it when they came into the duty license. Then we talked, listened, talked then about adjusting some of those pricing.
Well, I'd say you asked.
So.
Oh, by the way, one-day licenses, there, what, six twenty-five, Cindy? Six point two-five?
Yep.
So I'm not sure if you also want to adjust.
Six point two-five?
Six dollars and twenty-five cents?
Yeah. Other towns are like twenty-five, fifty dollars.
Yeah. Six point two-five.
Other towns. Sales tax.
I have looked at other towns, they're around twenty-five to fifty dollars a day.
Okay, so, no. So I played with this a little bit, and what I came up with, if you guys have it in front of you, is basically I went down to any ones that were three hundred and fifty, I bumped to five hundred. And all these incidental ones, the jukebox for ten dollars a year, the video game for twenty, I rounded everything up to twenty-five. So now if you do have a jukebox, it's going to cost you twenty-five dollars a year to run it. The video games used to be twenty per game, I bumped it to twenty-five, because, and that doesn't even probably cover the hour it takes to go through the process anyways, but it's, I think it's just more rounded. And pool tables, we used to be twenty, now it's twenty-five. That's basically what I did. And also the one-day liquor license, I went to twenty-five, which I think just really covers some of our cost to do it.
I have a question.
Because whenever Cindy does one of those, she has to do the application, she's got to deal with the licensing, supervising liquor license agent, which is the sergeant. She's got to deal with, she's got to deal with the building inspectors.
It's not a ten-minute process. You're there for an hour.
So if it was a one minute, you know, six dollars covers you in about, like, you know, six minutes worth of work, so it's not even covering the cost.
What about a comedian on the weekend?
Well, I thought about that.
Yeah, didn't you put that one up?
Yeah, twenty-five. I moved everything to twenty-five.
No, but it's weekdays.
Oh, well, weekdays.
What, are they free on the weekends?
Sunday.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah, the weekends are free.
I'm here all week.
Exactly.
Try the veal, right? Thank you.
You trying to be funny?
Yes.
Not working tonight. Not working at all.
What about the other prices?
I just want to.
Well, I just, I did want to note, I mean, from, I've, I've read this a couple times. Joe, I don't disagree with you.
Yep.
Just note that some of these are compounded, right? So your common all-alcohol licensed guy also picks up his video game, his jukebox, and they, they stacked up. You don't have a guy that's only paying you ten dollars a year for the weekday comedian.
Correct, that's right.
It gets piled up.
Right, it does. It gets added to his bill.
And we don't charge anything for admission to the Board of Selectmen. That's always free.
You didn't touch the bigger base bill.
I didn't touch any of the.
No, no, I get it. But what I'm saying is, there's these.
Oh, absolutely. So it's five hundred plus, I want a jukebox, that's five and a quarter, and I think half my staff are comedians, so is it twenty-five for each staff member, or is it just twenty-five for a comedian that thinks he's funny? So now you're five fifty. Nothing against the recs on our show the other night, but that's where you're at. And then, oh, yeah, I guess I want a pool table, so it's another twenty-five bucks. So, yeah, it does add up a little bit.
I have no issue with it. I just was making the point.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it does. It's à la carte.
Because, yeah, there's other ones, too, from the state, you know.
Can we go back to the one-day liquor license?
Yeah.
You know, what are other communities charging?
Between twenty-five and fifty.
You know, because, I mean, we, that is a hassle.
The twenty-five or the fifty?
No, no, I'm saying.
No, it's the six and twenty-five.
I think, you know, it probably should be fifty, Doc.
Well, I would have said fifty, Mr. Fox, but usually you harp on me anyway for that small business owner. I didn't want to go fifty and lose my leg over it. I thought I'd say a twenty-five and limpo.
Right, I mean, it's, it's just time consuming.
Nonprofit organizations don't get charged at all.
By discretion of the authority, or?
The way it's been since I started here. Because they usually do philanthropics, community things anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, we, like she said, her time, Carl's time.
I agree.
A sergeant's time.
Yeah, right.
You know, we should at least cover our costs.
The fire department has to get involved, because they have to send an inspector out because of structure. The building inspector's got to review it.
Landis.
No, I'm fine. I just thought you cut me off.
You're going to make that a form of motion?
I'll make a motion to add that one to fifty instead of the twenty-five I originally quoted.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yours is the official document.
That was for the whole slate.
Yep, for the whole slate.
Make a motion to approve as written. And basically, the common vicular wines and malt liquor license went from three fifty to five hundred. The other adjustment was the annual common vicular's malt and wine license went from three fifty to five hundred. And Farmers Brewery slash winery and farmery distilleries also went from three fifty to five hundred. And then, for you people writing stuff down, the jukebox, radio, TV went from ten to twenty-five. Video games, except for Pac-Man, went to, from twenty to twenty-five. Comedians, I'm here another ten minutes, went from ten to twenty-five. Pool tables went from twenty to twenty-five. Someone's writing it down. And then the one-day liquor license went from six dollars and twenty-five cents and some water for your horse to fifty.
So do you say yes?
Aye.
You made a motion. I second it.
We voted on it. So it already signed it and went down.
Are you selling alcohol?
Well, become a nonprofit, and then you can do it for free. At least for the permit. Okay. Yeah, that's.
Okay. Any other old business that we want to discuss this evening?
I have one thing. I know that there's been some communications going back and forth concerning line striping on College Highway, and I can appreciate the state saying that they're out of money.
Order was not a priority.
And not a priority.
The safety officer was dealing with it.
Right.
But the truck's in town.
But, but I would, even today, I saw another individual who's unfamiliar with it using it as a path. So I would like to send a nice letter to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, cee-seeing the other appropriate officials to that gentleman, and say, I can appreciate your position, but could we be on a high priority for next year? Because this has become a very dangerous situation. We're a border community, and perhaps that individual doesn't understand that people from the neighboring state of Connecticut aren't familiar with these type of left-hand turning lanes.
Middle lanes. I think, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, we could draft a letter for the clerk to send on behalf of the board to Masti O T.
So moved. Yeah, that's fine.
But, and it's also incredulous. I mean, they paved the section coming at the Agawam border, they striped it, took it out, restriped it, and dug up the road again to put the stripes. They just striped and painted fifty-seven for a mile. They couldn't have done, I mean, they, it's almost, it's almost like watching the state torture itself, right? That they couldn't have gone out there and have this, it's the same crew, have them go and paint College Highway. They're already marshaled in town, and the details are already.